Hello, Mr. Morgan. Good afternoon. Hello, Chair BSodi.
Hey.
For Brandon here to load up. Brandon, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Hello. Let's see. Okay. And I just got the green light from Miriam. She says we're now live, so we can start the presentation whenever you guys are ready.
We're just waiting for a quorum, I guess. I don't... Everybody... Oh, okay. I'm sorry. My screen didn't...
Let's see.
Aros just joined, so...
And Commissioner Madden as well.
Yeah, good.
There he is. Okay.
And Ernest, a gentleman by the name of Mike Falconin is going to be doing part of a presentation tonight, so if you can promote him to a panelist.
Okay.
When he comes on.
Sure. I don't think I see him on just yet, but... And then in attendance, we have the following presenters. So Daniel, you, and I guess we're just waiting for Mike. And then Commissioner Madden, I'm attempting to promote you to panelist. Looks like there might be an issue here.
You guys really okay?
Yes.
All right.
Hey, Michael. Should I make Mike a panelist before your presentation or after Brandon?
You can make him a panelist now. That would be fine.
Okay. He'll be joining us shortly. All right. The time is now 7:00 PM, and it looks like all commissioners are in the lobby. Are you guys ready to start? Okay. Michael, do you want to do a roll call for this part, please?
Sure. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Madden.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson. Not here. Commissioner DeRazzo.
Here.
Great. Vice Chair Harmon.
Here.
And Chair BSodi.
Here. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the November 16th Planning Commission meeting. For all of you at home attending virtually, thank you for joining us. Please note that we want to hear from you. If you are in the audience and would like to address the commission during the public comment section of the agenda, there are two options. First, for those of you on Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand button, and for those calling in, please use Star Nine. Please note you can only speak once per agenda item, and since we've done roll call, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner DeRazzo, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance. Well, I guess I'll wait. Is it going to appear here? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. I'm sorry that there was... I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with justice, liberty, and all.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to the first item of business tonight, which is the approval of minutes for October 19th, 2021. Do we have a motion or comments? Okay, we have a motion. Is there...
Was it... Was anybody else... It seems like the audio gain was very poor. I don't know if there's a way for Commissioner Morgan to improve his audio.
Is that better?
Much.
Okay. Sorry. Would you mind bringing that again, Commissioner?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 19th.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. We need a roll call vote. I'm sorry. Michael, would you be so kind as to lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Morgan.
Hi.
Commissioner Madden.
Hi.
Commissioner Levin.
Hello.
Mr. Johnson is excused. Commissioner DeRazzo.
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon.
Hi.
And Chair BSodi.
Hi. Okay, minutes are approved. Item two, public comments for items not on the agenda. Once again, for the folks at home, if you'd like to speak to the commission about something that is not on the agenda this evening, you can use your Zoom or Star Nine on your phone. And Ernest, is there anyone out there looking to speak to us?
Yes, it looks like Mr. Hamilton. Mr. Hamilton, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak. You have a total of three minutes. The timer will be displayed shortly.
All right, Laura, can you hear me? Hi.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, I just wanted... It's been a little bit since I've attended one of your meetings, and I just want to express on behalf of the council, and especially on behalf of me, my appreciation for the hard work that's being... and the great work that's being done by the commission. There's been a lot of landmark things coming across your desk over the past several months, and you guys have been just doing an awesome job, and I just wanted to pass that along and express my gratitude, and I'm going to head back into the audience and watch you do some more great work. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us?
There's actually not Chair BSodi.
Okay, then we'll move on to announcements. Item three, announcements of conflict interest. Anyone conflicted in the seat?
No.
Okay, we have none. Then we'll move on to item four, which is public hearings, and 4A is 2230 Fleetwood Drive. It's a request for an architectural review permit to allow a residential addition that would increase the overall floor area ratio of a single-family residence by more than 1,000 square feet. Staff report, please.
Good evening, everyone. Can you guys hear me okay? See the presentation okay? So as Chair BSodi mentioned, this is a request for a use permit and architectural review permit at 2230 Fleetwood Drive. Sorry. So the location of this project is located on Fleetwood Drive between Rollingwood and Crestwood Drives in the Rollingwood One subdivision of 1954. It is located on a 5,675 square foot lot. The existing single-family home that is on the site today is 2,260 square feet of gross floor area with an FAR of .41 and a lot coverage of 21%. The existing home does currently have three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and there is currently an active ADU permit in process for this home to add a 750 square foot ADU. Just a reminder for the commission that ADUs must be approved ministerially. The proposed project, which can be seen on the image on the left, is an addition, a two-story addition, with a total increase to the home of 1,108 square feet, taking away the proposed ADU from the scope. That would bring the final home, single-family home size, to a total of 2,618 square feet with an FAR of .48. The final proposed home would have four bedrooms and three bathrooms, and it would include a new or a remodeled open-concept kitchen family room dining area on the top floor as well as a new foyer, entry area. Some additional information about this project. The use permit for this project is for having second-story transparent windows when adjacent to a side yard of greater than 10 feet. This, as some of us spoke about at the ARC meeting for this project, you know, is to protect the privacy of neighboring properties. However, this neighborhood is predominantly built with homes that are... have side yards on one side of 20 feet or greater, with the main house being skewed more to the other side. And almost every home in this neighborhood does have windows that overlook these extra-large side yards. But it is a common aspect in the neighborhood. However, it is required by the code that you get a use permit for this. In addition, there is an active ADU conversion of this home, which would convert the lower story, including the garage. So with the active ADU permit that's already in process, it does make the home legal nonconforming with parking. Now, the updated parking code does say that if a home is nonconforming without being able to provide two covered spaces, it can provide two uncovered spaces, which this project does satisfy with the driveway spaces. In addition, this project meets all residential design guidelines, including the daylight plane, which is met front to back and on one side, and it does maintain the existing look and style of the present home as well as the neighborhood. So in conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission does approve this use permit and architectural review permit based on the findings and conditions of approval in the staff report. And that concludes the presentation for this project.
Thank you, Brandon. There we go. Are there any questions for staff? Anyone?
Just one comment. It states in the report that the ADU is a one-bedroom, but in fact, it's a two-bedroom ADU.
That is correct, and I'm sorry. I meant to point that out as an error earlier.
That's okay.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, let's open it up to public comment, and if the applicant is here, we'd love to hear from them.
The applicant is present today. Ernest, if you could let in Ms. Yuemin Chong.
Yes, Ms. Chong, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Good. Okay, so I can give you some design background and intent that we did for the project. The existing house, as Brandon mentioned, has three bedroom and two bath, and each bedroom are pretty small, and the living dining area is a long, narrow space separated from the kitchen at the back of the house by a stair enclosure walls. And so the each space is kind of narrow, and they don't open to each other so much. The family has two young boys growing up, and they like to have more spacious living dining area open to a new family room. The family room can be used for the boy as the study area, and they also like a more functional kitchen layout that's open to the family room. So besides what happened to the existing upper level, the basement level... level, the best basement level is, uh, mostly wasted, not being fully used. So we come up with a plan to allow open living area at upper level and two bedroom plus an office area at the lower level. So, and at the lower level basement level, uh, we also convert the garage to a two-bedroom ADU. The ADU will be completely separate from the main house unit with its own entry facing the street front. The main house entry shall follow the similar existing path from the sidewalk through the south yard to a new, uh, entry foyer, which is extended out towards the south yard about six feet. So, the entry to a house is not, is, can be improved with a transitional foyer that also, uh, providing a gas closet instead entering a house bluntly into a narrow living room. So the new family room, um, at the upper level facing the south shall have a folding glass door open towards a new patio facing the south yard. And, uh, we should also have two new skylight, uh, one above the stairway, the other above the kitchen for better natural light exposure. The living room window is enlarged and the living room space also widened. So eventually, the complete new house shall be more open to light and view and the vacant basement level, uh, can be fully utilized for both ADU and the main house uses. So that's the brief introduction of our design intent here. If you have any question, you can let me know.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant?
The applicant is, uh, not able to come tonight. So he, he, he say he's, uh, working at a remote area. It's hard to...
That's, that's fine. And that was, that question was more for the, uh, the commission to ask you if they have any question. Anyone? I don't see any hands. Okay, then we'll move on to public comment. Um, Ernest, Ernest, is there anyone in the public wishing to speak on the side of?
Uh, not at the moment, Chair.
All right. Uh, we get a motion in a second to close the public hearing then.
Yeah, I make a motion to, uh, approve a use permit number...
You're a little, you're a little ahead of us. We need to close the public...
Okay, sorry. Okay, make a motion to, to close the public, uh, comment. Sorry about that.
No, no worries. Do we have a second?
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Uh, may we have a roll call vote to close the public comment, please? Michael, would you be so kind?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Morgan?
Hi.
Commissioner Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner Leffin?
Hi.
Commissioner DeRazo?
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Hi.
And Chair BSadi?
Hi.
All right, at this point, we'll bring the conversation back to the commission for discussion, questions, votes or motions. Anyone?
For the chair?
Please.
Um, I know that, um, the volunteers for the Architectural Review Committee, um, discussed the, uh, windows on the, I believe it's the, well, the, the large, uh, elevation, I believe it was, I think it's east-facing. I don't have the plans in front of me, but east-facing windows, maybe it's north.
East is facing the street and, uh, the neighbor's side is facing the north.
Okay, so then it would be the north elevation.
Okay.
Facing the neighbors. Um, I know there was some discussion about the window placement and I was just curious how that discussion went during the archery.
And the commissioners want to address that one?
Uh, from my recollection, uh, they had, uh, a number of existing windows already on that size that were smaller and now they were being converted to, um, I think bedroom windows with an egress. And because of the elevation difference between the neighbor and the, uh, in this house, with this house being lower than the neighbor, I don't think we had any concerns about privacy from the lower house going up to the existing uphill house. That's my recollection.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments or anyone want to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve, uh, a use permit number eight, UP twenty-one zero zero eight. And, um, uh, view pa- uh, sorry. Uh, it's just a use permit, uh, based on findings one to six and conditions one to twenty-two.
There was also an architectural review permit.
Oh, sorry, it's...
AR twenty-one...
AR twenty-one zero one zero, yeah, so, sorry.
All right, thank you. We have a motion. Does anyone want a second?
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Michael, would you be so kind as to facilitate a roll call vote, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Morgan?
Hi.
Commissioner Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner DeRazo?
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Hi.
And Chair BSadi.
Hi. All right, so the motion is, uh, approved and there's a ten-day appeal period for that. So with that, we'll move on to item B, which seventeen twenty-three Hickory Avenue and it's a request for a use permit to allow a residential addition that would exceed the existing floor area ratio by more than fifty percent. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening again. Uh, as mentioned, this is a request for a use permit at seventeen twenty-three Hickory Avenue to exceed the existing floor area by more than fifty percent. I must point out first, there are two errors in the staff report. Um, the first is that the ARC discussion section, uh, was not properly, uh, uh, updated. Uh, so there was, uh, ARC discussion on this project about, um, the height and, uh, view of a, uh, the view of a neighbors. And the final error is that the final condition about fire sprinklers was included in error. So this, uh, per the fire marshal, this project does not require fire sprinklers. So this site is located on Hickory Avenue between Cedar and Cherry Avenues in the Mills Park Three subdivision on a five-thousand-square-foot lot. The current home is a one-story eleven-hundred-and-fifty-one-square-foot home with an FAR of point two-three and a twenty-four percent lot coverage. The current home has two bedrooms and a bathroom along with an attached one-car garage. The proposed project does propose a two-story addition at the rear, uh, with a new second story. There would be a total increase of nine-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet to this home, which would bring the, uh, final proposed home to a size of two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-seven square feet with an FAR of point, uh, four-two-seven and a lot coverage of thirty-seven percent. The final home would include four bedrooms and three bathrooms, uh, with an open-concept kitchen and family room area. The plan sets here show the new proposed second floor on the, uh, right-hand side with a new master bedroom. And then on the left, the proposed, uh, lower floor with the expanded, uh, dining room, kitchen, family room and stairway. This project does comply with all San Bruno residential design guidelines, including maintaining, uh, materials and style of the surrounding home. And that includes the presentation for seventeen thirty, twenty-three Hickory Avenue, uh, with the recommendation that staff does recommend that the planning commission approve this use permit.
Very good. Thank you, Brandon. All right, do we have any questions for staff? Charles?
I was looking at the section on the increase in the impervious surface and I was wondering, uh, it is a fairly substantial increase in terms of the percentage, although it looked like at least some of that was semi-pervious, that it was sort of paver-type materials where there are at least cracks. Is that, is that right?
Yes, I, I do believe that with the project, they're proposing like a, a more, um, expansive, uh, rear yard, like, uh, area, patio area, um, but it does still, uh, fall well under the eighty percent requirement of impervious surface.
Okay, are there any other questions for staff? All right, um, then we'll go ahead and we'll open up public comment. Is the applicant with us this evening?
Yes, the owner and designer are both in the audience.
Thank you. And if they would like to address us, we'd be happy to hear from them.
Great, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Uh, my name's Daniel Fass. I'm the homeowner. Um, yeah, to, to introduce the project, uh, basically, my wife and I have been living in our house for, I think, a little over three years now. Uh, and we have a, a two-year-old toddler, um, so we're kind of starting to grow out of the space a little bit. It's a nine-hundred-square-foot house right now with two bedrooms and one bath. Uh, so our proposal is basically to, to add, uh, basically a two, a two-story addition off the back of the house while trying to impact the backyard as little as possible since we want to maintain as much of it as we can for, uh, our one toddler and hopefully more soon. And basically, we're looking to add, uh, a master bedroom suite in the upstairs portion of the addition uh, and move our kitchen, uh, to the new portion of the addition in the lower, uh, story. And our current kitchen would convert to a, uh, a bedroom and that would take our total to, to four bedrooms and three bathrooms for the house. Uh, and we're looking to convert our covered porch, uh, to basically a closed-in porch, uh, and move our front door, uh, I guess to the front of the porch, so we can treat it as more of a, a mudroom. And that's, yeah, that's basically the, the proposal. I'm happy to, to answer any questions I can or, or Dana or design, or architects can, can answer any other ones.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions for the applicant or the architect? Nope. Okay, I guess there's none. Um, is anyone in the public ready to speak to us, Ernest?
Ernest? Uh, it looks like, no, there are, there are no members in the public.
Okay, um, may we once again get a motion to close public comment then?
I will move that we close public comment.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second to close public comment. Michael, would you assist us again in a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Morgan?
Hi.
Commissioner Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner Leffin?
Hi.
Commissioner DeRazo?
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Hi.
And Chair BSadi.
Hi.
Okay, we've closed public comment. Um, is there any conversation for comments? We'll move it back to the commission. motions? discussion?
If there is, if there is no other comment, I'm happy to make a motion. I will move that we approve use permit UP twenty-one zero one-one based on findings one to three and conditions of approval one to twenty-three.
And I have a second motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Michael, once again, would you be so kind as to do a roll call vote for us, please?
Certainly. Uh, Chairman Morgan?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner Leffin?
Hi.
Commissioner DeRazo?
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Hi.
And Chair BSadi.
Hi. Okay, the motion passes and there's also a ten-day appeal period on this one. That brings us to item C, which is a proposed amendment to the San Bruno Municipal Code Title twelve Land Use, Article three, zoning chapter twelve, point eight, four, point zero, three, zero. Staff report, please.
Michael, would you like to screen share or would you like me to share? You're, you're on mute.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do the screen share on this one.
Sure.
Hey, hopefully everyone can see the...
Yes, and good evening again, everybody. Uh, so, uh, we are bringing before you tonight as the third item a proposed amendment to the temporary use permit section of our zoning code relating to, uh, off-site construction staging areas. And for, um, next slide, and for tonight's presentation, uh, we'll, we'll give you a little bit of a background, um, about, uh, and then our consultant Mike McCalden will present further about, uh, the, uh, uh, proposed amendment. He'll go over, uh, the objective of this along with, uh, some of our current ways of regulating construction storage areas as long as a overview of different, uh, standards that are found in different, uh, uh, regulatory abilities in the city, along with some findings and proposed standards, uh, to this change. We'll conclude with a recommendation for this ordinance amendment. And so, a little bit of background, uh, there has been, uh, various concerns throughout the city, uh, raised at the, uh, public and city council level about how construction, uh, areas are looking throughout the city. Uh, there's been some, uh, concern that some of these are unsightly and not well-maintained. At the, uh, September fourteenth meeting of the city council, uh, staff held a study session, uh, to direct, or staff held a study session about a possibility of, uh, ru- uh, sorry, a possibility of having a, a amendment to the temporary use permit section of the zoning code. Uh, staff was directed to return with a recommendation, uh, and, uh, seek ways in which this process can be improved. So, um, there are various ways in which, uh, construction staging, uh, is addressed in the city of San Bruno and I think Mike will be going over some of these in a few. However, the one that is in the spotlight tonight is the planning commission review of temporary use permits for off-site construction staging areas. Uh, so he's gonna be going over some of the, um, various requirements for, uh, construction stating, staging sites and how, uh, this change as well as some other proposed standards will help for a more, um, consistent application, uh, monitoring and enforcement of these construction staging areas across the city. And so without further ado, I would like to introduce our city consultant, uh, Mike McCalden and he's gonna take over for me. Mike?
Uh, good evening, uh, commissioners. Uh, uh, my name is Mike McCalden. Um, I'm a former, uh, public works director here in the Bay Area who's now doing, uh, some consulting work on the side and I was, I've been helping out the city during the transition and after Jimmy Kwan, the former public works director, left, uh, you know, I've been providing assistance on... director left, you know, I've been providing assistance on an as-needed basis and so this was one of the projects assigned to me was to revisit this issue and to see what the city could do differently. So, the, you know, objective behind the project, you know, at the end of the day, really the goal is to minimize the visual impact of construction projects on communities. And although the primary focus initially was just on staging areas, which off-site staging areas, we decided to broaden the scope to include, you know, the construction areas themselves because why limit it to just outside staging areas when we can maybe, you know, create and improve the standards for the construction sites and onsite staging and off-site staging and storage areas too. So, the goal was to strengthen and standardize the city's standards for fencing and screening of construction sites as well as off-site storage and staging areas. And also part of it was to institute a timely and efficient process for the review approval and oversight of construction site staging area fencing and screening. So, to look at current regulations, the city currently regulated construction sites and off-site staging areas, you said on the next one. The first is, if it's a city project, right, the city, the public works department, you know, writes specifications, develops plans for, you know, each of the capital projects that are instituted, so that's typically where any kind of provision for construction area fencing, screening and storage area screening would be put into place. For projects that are in the city right-of-way, again, that would be the public works department, they would issue encroachment permits and then encroachment permits have standardized conditions of approval and then, you know, depending on the project, there may be some project-specific conditions that could be applied. And then, you know, more in kind of under your purview, the planning department and community development department, you know, has conditions of approval, you know, any time a project going through the planning or an entitlement process where, just like you've done on the two projects that were just discussed at this meeting, you know, staff and the commission had the opportunity to add or amend conditions of approval. And then lastly, their building permit process, so pretty much any construction that happens in the city, if it's not happening through, if it doesn't acquire zoning or planning approval, if it doesn't, if it's not an engineering project and isn't in the right-of-way, then it may simply get a building permit and every building project, you know, has, that they should build a permit has standard permit conditions, like which again can be modified or strengthened depending on the size and scope of the project. And something that's pretty unique to San Bruno is the zoning code requirement that all off-site temporary construction staging areas obtain temporary use permit from the planning commission. So... So, in reviewing the construction site standards, one of the things that we found is that the city does not have consistent and detailed standards for staging area and construction site temporary fencing and screening. The standards are varied depending on the department, so the public works language for fencing or screening or site, housekeeping, you know, could be different than what the building department does versus, you know, the planning department. And so, that's one of the first things that we looked at is to come up with standards that could be used by all the departments for projects. Part of that search was to do an internet search and to reach out to neighboring cities, so the internet search, you can call it a global search, right, because pretty much you pull up anything that you can find for any kind of jurisdiction that had standards for fencing and screening. And then we talked to some northern San Mateo County cities such as Burlingame, South San Francisco and others to get a sense of what, you know, what they did in terms of regulating and or providing construction storage areas. And also to obtain, ultimately obtain model language on the two that we could possibly use here at San Bruno. So, as a result of that work, we came up with a number of findings, one of that, many cities, especially a lot of your local neighbors like Burlingame and there was at least one or two more, but Burlingame stands out right now, but they actually have their own staging areas, they identify them prior to projects and sort of offer them to the contractors prior, you know, projects even going to bid. So, in the case of Burlingame, they're able to, it's kind of a, it's by the bay shore, it's kind of an off-site area out of the way, so from the standpoint of, it's out of the public eye, so it's kind of a convenient location, but not all municipalities have that, they don't have access to a city on-site that's out of the way, that would, that kind of is a neat way of providing off-site storage for contractors that, you know, doesn't pose any kind of, you know, public nuisance. But, you know, quite a few cities do, and so that's something that unfortunately right now, San Bruno doesn't have a great location now, although the city continues to try to find something that could work. A few agencies actually have detailed fencing and screening specifications and requirements for construction sites and some of them are actually fairly detailed, but our search did not find really any standard for off-site staging areas, but it's very easy to borrow the standards from the construction site for fencing and screening, so that's what we did. I'm sorry, my screen just disappeared here, here we go, sorry about that. So, cities' requirements, San Bruno's requirements for temporary use permit to be at the planning commission is very unusual, it's not something that I was able to find at any other municipality. And because of process, you know, there's some potential for increasing project costs, it's not sort of the best use of staff time and it can be impractical for many projects because of the timing, you know, a contractor can get a notice to proceed in thirty days and those thirty days they've got to pretty much be ready to go, whereas going through the planning process can take sixty to ninety days and so, and for a lot of projects, especially smaller ones, it imposes quite a financial burden. And in some cases, the project might even be done before they're through the planning process for an outside staging area, so there are some practical difficulties with the city's current requirement. And the other thing that we found is that the city has actually very effective existing mechanisms to regulate both public and private, you know, construction projects, both in the right-of-way and on public and private property. So next, we're going to go over some of the proposed standards and how they're going to be enforced. So, we'll run it through in order in terms of the type of project it is, so first is projects in the public right-of-way. So, there was a recent project that was completed where there was storage of sewer and water pipes for, I think it ended up being for almost a year, and so that became kind of a nuisance for the neighborhood because the location was out on the street and it had been there for a long period of time and the materials really never moved. So, in order to address the concerns of those types of projects, we're proposing the following standardized language. And these are, what I'm going to show you tonight is just kind of the highlights of the standards, the specific language that we're proposing is attached to that G M I. So, the key aspects of storage in public right-of-way would be to limit the storage to five workdays and move the staging area progressively, so in other words, you know, whatever you bring on-site on Monday has to be moved by five and so there'd be no storage over the weekend and then debris and loose material would have to be cleaned up at the end of each workday and of course at the end of the week. And so then that effect is that the material won't be sitting in front of somebody's house or, you know, on the same portion of the street for weeks or months on end, the idea is that you bring enough material on-site, so to speak, to do the work you need in that workweek, clean it up, get it out for the weekend and then, you know, assuming that this would be mostly be things like pipeline projects and sewer and water, then, you know, next time, next week, you're probably moved down to the next block or two blocks over, your staging area will be in that area for the next week, which again will be removed at the end of the week and then brought back on the following Monday. So, the idea there is to take care of the concern about storage in the public right-of-way in one location, to keep those sites moving and to not store stuff over the weekend or it'll be an ice war all weekend. For products in the public or on, sorry, on public or private property, the construction site and staging areas would be secured by chain link fence with bottom and top rail. So currently, the city doesn't have a standard touch about the top and bottom rail, but those are critical because then, one of the next requirements is, is that if it's adjacent to a public right-of-way, the fence must have screening that is maintained in a taut condition with no ribs for tails greater than two inches and so, without a top and bottom rail, you really can't have a top fence and I think one of the locations that I saw at the city that was being used was a, it was a corner, I think it was at San Bruno Avenue in Huntington, is it Huntington? It was a site there and there was no top rail and bottom rail, so the fabric was kind of hanging loosely off the fence, it just didn't look very attractive, so that requirement alone will keep it looking better. And then any pole or rib screening would have to be replaced within forty-eight hours and then an additional requirement, what we came up with is the fence has to be set back two feet from sidewalk where possible. And the idea there is not to make the fence where it's like squeezing people out into the street potentially, but if there's room on the site, it gives people more kind of shoulder room to walk down the sidewalk. And then all areas visible from the public right-of-way to be maintained free of weeds and litter, so that would be something that would have to be, you know, enforced by either public works or building inspectors to make sure that the site is kept clean at all times. And the next slide is just kind of a stock photo of what a fence with top and bottom rail with kind of a taut green tarp would look like, so that's what you should expect to see, you know, in the public right-of-way as opposed to something that's torn and sag and flapping in the wind, that would be the standard and expectation for any kind of screening and fencing. So, kind of the last, the last kind of condition that we also add is for construction sites on public or private property and the difference here is that this is limited to construction sites, it wouldn't be for outside staging areas. So, for any construction site where you have fencing up facing the public roadway, the standard would be to include a sign that provides the name, the monthly contact information for the general contractor and then we provide some standards for how big the lettering should be, that it should be legible from ten feet away and then that the sign shall not extend beyond the top of the fence, it shouldn't look like a billboard, it should be something that's within the, kind of the background of the fence. And then the sign language and any kind of graphics to go with that would have to be approved by city staff. And as you can imagine, the key to anything like this is anytime you bring in new standards or have even existing standards, the key to doing anything is to make sure that staff is trained on the standards and enforces the standard, so part of this strategy would make sure that all engineering, planning, building and code enforcement staff are trained to these new standards, understand what they mean and understand that the city, you know, at the city council, the city manager and the commission have a kind of renewed emphasis on making sure that project areas are kept clean, look good, to make sure that, you know, sites are not allowed to kind of deteriorate where the fencing, the screenings falling apart and there's weeds and litter going everywhere, so that's, that'll be part of the training. And kind of the last step in the process is, is the staff has been currently doing this, but we'll continue to search for private staging areas that could be made available to both contractors working for the city or for private developers. If the city can, you know, find a site that's more out of the way where there just won't be the public issues with, you know, visibility, noise or any other potential concerns with the staging areas, that would be ideal if the staff can find a location that's more out of the way. And with that, I think that's the end of my presentation.
So, in conclusion, staff is recommending that the planning commission would adopt the resolution recommending that city council adopt the zoning ordinance amendment to revise section twelve point eight-four point zero-three-zero of the municipal code to remove all references to off-site construction staging areas and with this recommendation, these construction staging standards that were described by Mr. McCallden will be administratively applied to all projects and new projects reviewed by staff and the planning commission will include these conditions that require all construction staging areas follow these standards and staff would also be trained to consistently apply them across the board of all construction areas. And I believe that is the conclusion of the presentation.
Alright, thank you Brandon. At this point, I guess we should open it up to the public since there is no applicant to the city, that's us, is there anyone in the public who would like to address the question at this time?
There's no one in the public chair.
Okay. Can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
A motion to close the public hearing?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second this.
Alright, we have a motion in a second, Michael, would you be so kind once again?
Certainly. Commissioner Morgan?
Hi.
Mr. Madden?
Hi.
Mr. Leffin?
Hi.
Mr. Durazzo?
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon? Vice Chair Harmon?
Hi.
Oh, okay, sorry Horace, and Chair Biassani?
My internet is being wonky, sorry.
No worries.
And that was a hi for me as well, Michael.
Okay.
Alright, let's bring it back to the commission for questions, conversations, or someone want to make a motion for a resolution?
I have just one question, in high wind areas, this screening often has holes in it to reduce wind pressure, would that be allowed on these regulations?
I can address that, so that's something that we currently know, but the thought was that any kind of screening would have to be properly anchored to address that kind of the wind issue, right, because putting one or two small holes, you know, doesn't necessarily prevent them getting moved or blown over, so the idea was that it'd be, had to be properly anchored with concrete blocks or whatever else to keep them from moving or tilting over.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions or comments? Kelly?
Thanks, a question about kind of the, how can I say this, I guess the scale or at what point would these requirements apply to a job, I guess, the situation that I'm rolling through in my mind is, for example, we had a house down the street and they were doing pavers, they were doing a paver driveway and their pavers sat on the curb for, I don't know, a couple of weeks and that didn't seem like a terrible ask, but it would go outside of that five-day requirement and I think in the end, if they hadn't been allowed to store those pavers for a couple of weeks out on the, like in a parking spot, they would have incurred multiple delivery fees and that kind of does end up falling into the lap of the homeowners and so I just didn't know like what size project this would end up affecting, I understand if it's a large development and it's completely unacceptable to have large sewer pipes resting in valuable parking places for, you know, a year plus, but I was just curious kind of when this kicks in and what kind of flexibility there is for homeowners.
Mike, you want me to take that one?
Sure.
So, so when people have the pavers done or they're doing other front yard work, sometimes, you know, pavers are delivered and stored in the right-of-way without the city knowing it, so if, but ideally, the homeowner or their contractor should be obtaining an encroachment permit from the city for if they're blocking any portion of the street or side, they can't, well, they can't block the sidewalk, but if they're taking up a parking space and then that would be regulated through the encroachment permit processes Mike was talking about, that would be one of the, you know, when the encroachment permits issued, there would be a standard, you know, these standards would be attached to it ideally so that the homeowner would know what their requirements are and then they'd have to work with the public works department on any timing issues and possible other places to store, store the items if it's going to be more than a week.
Yeah, and if I can add, I mean, one of the things that we did is that, one of the questions that... one of the questions that is just going to be codified, right, in the MUNI code or in the zoning code. And that's one of the reasons why we're not recommending changing the, you know, or adding this specific language. In other words, we want to be able to flex, like you say, because A, we may find out a year or two in that one of the requirements doesn't make sense or it doesn't work. Instead of having to go back and go through a lengthy process of amending the zoning code, you know, the change can just be made administratively. And, and because it's an administrative process, there is some discretion allowed, right? Because, you know, there's always thing, well, yeah, it's generally a week, but, you know, in this particular case, because, you know, it is a homeowner, it's residential street, you know, they may need, you know, an extra week. I mean, that's something that can probably be granted. But I think the idea for like a public works project, we just don't want a contractor that's just feeling comfortable just flopping stuff down in the street and leaving it there for weeks on end. So I think that's really the main goal is to like, remove all discretion and flexibility, but to set, you know, kind of a standard where, you know, hopefully ninety percent of the time that will be the standard. But then, you know, where it just doesn't make sense, you know, people may just have to store over the weekend. Like you say, you're not going to come out and move the, you know, pallet of blocks for the weekend and then bring it back on Monday. That's probably not practical.
Commissioner Harmon?
Thank you.
So Kelly, um, I see Commissioner Harmon has his hand raised.
Yeah, and I apologize, my, my internet is really, it's, I, I'm having issues. So if I break up, um, I, I'm hoping that this discretion can also somewhat take care of the concern that um, Commissioner Morgan had raised. Cause um, I know definitely uh, you got those evening breezes here that just whip through. And I, I think for some corridors, um, we may want some discretion to do something that the screening is a little more lattice-like. Um, I guess the other issue that I wanted to review was I remember um, when we were reviewing, there was the proposed school project, which I think is now canceled. Bring to bear. Um, and so I wanted to understand how uh, any of these changes would interact with our sort of noticing of these things. I mean, it's, it sounds like, um, you know, we used to do like a separate temporary use permit for the construction staging area. And now this will just be rolled in with... Is that right? So that we basically have the same public noticing requirements just kind of rolled into a single item?
Yeah, that's, I'll take that one. The, so the, the temporary use permit is, is noticed typically within three hundred feet. So uh, with the application of these standards, there would, there would not be a, a public noticing requirement per se. But I think what the intent was, was if a, you know, a certain construction activity was going to affect, you know, a certain number of neighbors or, or a certain block, that there would be notice to those immediate neighbors that opposed to doing a full uh, three hundred foot notice. So it would be a little bit more specific to the location of the, uh, the construction staging area. If it's, if, if it's in conjunction with a uh, construction project, um, then that automatically gets noticed, um, you know, for the project itself and any construction stating that goes along with it. Um, so that would have the same noticing. But by eliminating the temporary use, the language, the, the requirement for the temporary use permit, it would eliminate the advance, the, the time of the, you know, putting out the ten day notice, ten days prior to the planning commission hearing. And then um, having to try and schedule the planning commission hearing, you know, what, you know, in a timely manner. If, if they miss a, miss a cycle and we can't notice it in time, then, you know, obviously, then that's where the delay that Mike was talking about comes in. But I think there's still, there still would be a, an intent to get the word out about, especially if it's a public works project that's going to be affecting some right of way.
Okay. Are there any other questions or staff? Uh, Commissioner Madden?
Uh, yeah, um, I have some concerns like uh, the, the solid fence tarping as uh, Commissioner Morgan mentioned. If those are not ballasted down properly with sandbags, those are overhurting moment issues. I think we have, we're going to have that problem at the uh, the new gymnasium we're building. I've seen that fence. It doesn't look very sturdy. Um, I have concerns about this. Uh, I don't know if this is part of what we're voting on tonight, but it's being mandated for any single family homes. Um, I don't think we should be forcing people to incur the cost of renting fences around their houses to do remodels or additions. Uh, if it's for a commercial project or a project over a certain value, say, you know, two, three million, something that would exceed the prices of most homes, I have no issue with that. I have an issue with, say, someone wants to rent a dumpster from Recology for the weekend and wants to do some do-it-yourself work or dumping things. And they have parked this on their sidewalk and they want to do it over the weekend. This would seem to violate that. Um, so for these rea- and then other reasons, we may be incurring costs to the city on major projects like sewer project that didn't get voted on. But I've seen PG&E working for several weeks at a time in my neighborhood where they park large vehicles, uh, skids, um, crane trucks, dump trucks right on the street, uh, taking up multiple spaces. I don't think we should have to make those guys uh, move everything out of the way for the weekend or fence it off. And so for these reasons, I'm going to be voting no on that.
Anyone else like to make a comment?
Yeah, uh, I would agree with uh, Commissioner Madden. Uh, I think what he's saying is making a lot of sense. For, for private house uh, operations or something like that, I think it's crazy to have to fence the whole thing in. And as, you know, if somebody wants to clear out their house or garden and they want to get a dumpster, probably the only time they could do it is at weekend when they're off work. So there should be allowances for these sort of things.
Yeah, I don't think dump, I don't think the uh, intent was ever to include dumpsters in it. And, and I don't think the intent was to include residential, you know, typical home remodeling in it. But I mean, that, you know, that's, that's a good question for, for Michael because, you know, maybe we need to clarify that.
Yeah, no, this is, this is a, these are great, these are great points. No, the intent was not to include residential because it's not um, anything that would be subject to um, a staging area. And uh, you know, that's on, on private property. And those residential projects are small enough that they typically store the materials and do the staging on time. So it's real, it, it's really geared towards any new multi-family, large multi-family, new construction. You know, that would need to be, you know, well managed uh, onsite. So it's, so really, it's not, it's not the homeowner uh, doing addition or, or remodel. And it's not, not a dumpster um, for, you know, for the weekend. Well, for me, that would-
Even mine, that we're not, we're not really changing the, in other words, whatever was required in the past will continue to be required. We're just simply saying is that right now, there wasn't a consistent standard for fencing and screening. Uh, so, you know, projects that didn't have fencing before aren't, aren't going to suddenly require fencing. It's just simply saying, when you've got a, you know, you had a credit-looking fence and, and a flapping green thing, those kind of things, we're just trying to make sure that those types of, you know, in commercial uh, settings where, you know, high, high visibility settings, you know, they're going to be properly screened uh, and properly fenced so that it just doesn't look ugly, that, you know, there's better housekeeping. That's really the intent. It's not, so I don't think you're going to see anything different in terms of the types of projects that are required to fencing. It's just, just saying when you do have fencing, we would like all the departments and, you know, as the city as a whole have a consistent standard. I think that's really the intent behind this.
Understood, but I think the example Commissioner Levin pointed out with the delivery of pavers sitting out on the sidewalk, that can be out of the homeowner's uh, control. A lot of these residential contractors, they still show up when they say they will. And they can be sitting there and the homeowner has no recourse except to wait. And again, the dumpster issue, if those are sitting on, on the street in a parking space as the exi- uh, public parking space on the, next to the sidewalk, that seemed to be what you guys were talking about further. So at this point in time, I'm voting no. But if you guys could clarify that future, uh, I will vote, change my vote. It probably will pass anyway, but who knows? So thank you.
So Michael, I have a question. Given the comments that we've heard so far, um, are we bound to this resolution the way it's written? Or can we make adjustments?
No, you're welcome. Yeah, you're welcome to make adjustments. You could add, um, you know, an additional uh, finding or you could um, expand. Let's see here. The resolution. Let's see here.
Now, I would just point out that most residential construction projects that do choose to get a fence is to protect their equipment from theft and their tools. It is not to have privacy screening or aesthetics. It's a purely uh, you know, functional thing. So no one can get in there and, and take all the copper pipe out of the building after it's been installed or steal tools or drive off with a tractor. Um, the purpose of fencing on residential is typically not an aesthetic. Um, construction yards, big projects, same thing. It's to protect the tools and to provide uh, egress and ingress with a security guard typically. So they minimize the points of entry and exit. It's not an aesthetic thing typically, although I do agree with you. It can get kind of raggedy looking uh, over the course of time. But uh, it's, yeah, this is my experience.
So uh, through the chair, one suggestion would be to um, is uh, the attachment one, which is the, the standards, rather than trying to modify the resolution, um, would be to add to the, the standards, uh, you know, an item where, uh, an item D, which basically, you know, states that uh, you know, standards are, would not apply to private res- uh, single-family residential projects um, where construction uh, screening is not required, uh, currently required or nor would it apply to uh, material delivery or the use of dumpsters uh, for single-family residential projects. If you, that, that's just one option.
Okay. Commissioner Harmon?
Uh, I'd actually extend that to small, multi-family and a quadplex.
Yeah, I would agree with that, especially since we have ADUs coming online and that type of, the new changes in the zoning laws, I think that's only fair. Michael, how would you suggest we proceed at this point with that? If we were to choose something like that, like that item D you were just suggesting?
Um, we could either, well, we could either work on the, you know, uh, work out the language now or you could um, direct staff to uh, you know, to, to add language to that effect before, before it goes to the city council.
Any of our commissioners have comments on that suggestion?
So my, my understanding is that it, it's already the intent that these residential projects, these issues that like what, what Commissioner Levin had raised, what Commissioner Madden is concerned with, that this is already intended to be dealt with through the encroachment permit process. I've um, looked at needing an encroachment permit myself for renovations. And so I, I'm personally comfortable leaving it up to staff to just sort of, um, you know, draft sort of an explicit clarification that this is focused on the larger-scale, multi-family and commercial projects. Um, but uh, I don't know if Commissioner Madden is, is uh, his concerns are assuaged here or not.
If there's an urgency and it's already an existing policy, I would prefer just to see a revision at the next meeting.
Okay. Um- You can do that.
And it can be very quick, just a bullet list of exceptions to the rule and that's it, that's five minutes, you know?
Yeah, that, that's fine. And, and um, I'm just noticing by looking at the packet here, um, I think um, we, we are missing the um, the resolution and the, the draft ordinance. Um, and all we have attached is, is attachment one. So we, we do need to come back to bring that, bring the actual resolution and the draft ordinance to you. So I apologize for that.
So on behalf of what I've heard from the commissioners and Michael, why don't we add that item D that we were talking about? Um, just for everyone's peace of mind. And what do we need to do to bring this back at the next meeting? Do we need to take a vote right now or just?
Um, if you, I guess if you'd like to discuss it, you could uh, vote to continue the public hearing to our January meeting. Um, that might be best so that the public hearing would remain open in case you had any comments or questions. And if there's any public that joins, uh, they could, you know, also make comments as well. So you could make a motion to continue it to um, to our first meeting in January.
Okay.
Uh, January eighteenth.
Very good. Kelly, I see you have your hand raised there for a second?
Hi, yes, thank you. Um, before um, before we've made bullet points and stuff, and I'm, I'm really glad that we're going to be bringing this back because I think there are a lot of really valid uh, concerns. Um, and I think also there's um, a lot of benefit to, to considering this uh, change. Um, I was, I was thinking about another construction site that was um, in my residential neighborhood. It was a uh, it was a residential project. It was um, a very large addition near my home and they did use fencing. And I think as um, Commissioner Madden had mentioned, it was um, to protect some tools and stuff. It also was really unsightly situation. And the fencing was held up with ropes against like a tree that was kind of fallen over. And the fence is kind of flapping around and it was catching garbage and the weeds were all growing up. So I, I do support the idea of, of this change covering. I, I, I wouldn't want to exclude all residential, like enforcement of residential situations. Because if there is a residential project that is using fencing, it should be maintained properly and it should be safe and it should be secure. So I just want to be, make sure that as we are excluding the requirement for the fencing from residential projects, that it still covers residential projects that should be using fencing to make sure that it's safe and clean and, and uh, properly done.
Good point. Michael, would you be so kind as to incorporate those comments in the uh, in the upcoming or the possible upcoming?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to add to the conversation at this point? Commissioner Harmon?
So I, I wanted to loop back to the conversation around noticing because my, my internet just got very wonky there for a bit. And I guess the, so on the scale of the large uh, projects, the public works projects, potentially um, large private construction where uh, we, so, you know, currently, you know, you send, we sent out a notice within a certain distance of the project site. And what I wanted was clarification of whether if you have an off-site staging area, you would have noticing based on proximity to that staging area as well for this project. Because, right, if we're moving from having a separate hearing about the construction staging to saying that that's essentially included in the conditions of the main project, um, do you follow for where I'm going? That like the people who are adjacent to the staging area but not the main site, they might not hear about it in that case, it seems like.
Right.
So uh, so are we in fact noticing on the basis of that? Or is like, is that already sort of included in the principles of this? Or is that something that we should be adding?
Well, it's only, we only do the noticing through the planning department if it's the temporary use permit and it's the three hundred feet notice. I, I'll have to check with, we'll, we'll check with public works about public works-related projects of the type of- Noticing that they do for various types of Public Works projects, so we can, we'll be able to have that information for you.
I thought another question based on Commissioner Harmon's comments. So, this was about the temporary use permit for off-site staging. Is that only when a fence is required, or just when any? Off-site use is being proposed, because I I think. I'm I'm fine with the staff are not going through planning commission to do these type of things, provided that there is a. Procedure for mainly what I would be concerned about is traffic flow. If they are, you know, say reversing out of a driveway, blocking the street that they have flagmen. Set up, kind of like what they do on the PGVE projects and things like that, I assume all that stuff would be. Reviewed by somebody at the city or some form, the contractor would fill out to ensure, yes, we are doing these things. With or without a fence on an off-site staging area. Application, is that the case?
Yeah, usually there's, for larger projects, there's a traffic control plan and other. Information that is required from the Public Works Department. Whether it's an encouragement permit or another type of project. Also, if it's on, you know, related to El Camino Real, that also requires a Caltrans encouragement permit. But also let Mike. Mike adds add to that if. If you have more information, Mike, on on what the Public Works Department typically would do.
Yeah, no, that's that's right, typically you would have, you know, like the traffic control plan, you would even have a site storage plan, that's typically in in job specifications for public works projects is. You actually have to kind of lay out how you plan to store things. And to make sure that, you know, things aren't getting damaged or secured, things like that, so that's that's typically all part of the preparation mobilization stage of a. Of a public works project, not necessarily a private project. And and yeah, I just want to make sure that. You you're right in saying that this, it doesn't impact any other temporary use, I mean, it's very specific to off-site construction staging, that's the only thing that we're altering here. So, all the noticing requirements for any other kind of temporary use doesn't change, it's just that. For whatever reason, construction, temporary construction storage is very specifically called out in the zoning code, which that's the thing that's really unusual. It was called out and separated from everything else, because for any other temporary use permit in the zoning code. There's administrative authority, you know, for up to three months, you, the the planning commission wouldn't even see that, unless it was planned for more than three months. For whatever reason, temporary construction storage was specifically spelled out for any length of time, so literally even for theoretically for a week long project, it would have to go to the zone. With the planning commission for approval, that's that's the part that is really unusual, and we're trying to. Adjust so that projects can move more smoothly with less burden on them.
So, is there a way to separate, you know, most of our comments have to do with the fencing requirement? Is there a way to separate that from the temporary use off-site permit not going to planning, or? You get what I'm saying, it seems like maybe we've kind of. Brought in this fence issue. And it's kind of holding things up now.
Right, but I mean, I I guess, I guess I'll go back to what I thought was that weren't, there's really no new fencing requirement, right? In other words, if a fence is required, it's gonna, it's nothing has changed, the only thing we're saying is that if a fence is required, or if you're installing one, we just want to make sure that it looks okay. Right, that's the only thing that's changing, so in other words, there's no new requirement for fencing, in other words, if a project that used to require fencing, there's nothing in the language that says you now have to install it. The only thing we're adding is that right now, it's the public works spec typically say a fence would have to be put up for security and kept in good condition. That's what it says right now, so all we're saying is, here's what good condition means. Good condition means that, you know, the screening isn't flapping around, it means that, you know, there's no gaps in the in the fence. That it's secured and whatever else, that's all that we're really changing. Because right now, the language in 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 the general of specifications and in the conditions of approval, hey, you need to have a fence with screening, it just doesn't have any specification, so we're just trying to be. A little bit more specific so that when a fence is falling apart, an inspector can go out and say, hey, look, here's what you need to do to make it look better, because right now, there's just no standard.
And you want to make that standard across all the departments, public works and.
For that, yeah, whether you're putting the fence for a public works project, or a building project, or a planning project, you know, no one's getting treated differently, everyone's using the same standard.
Now, that makes it easier for you guys to administrate as well, I would imagine.
Correct, right, but there's no new fencing requirement, other than the fact that we're just making a standard fencing requirement, and here's what it means when we say in good condition. We're just defining good condition for fence and screening, but but there's no no additional requirement, in other words, we're not saying, hey, now you'll have to fence no matter what. It's just where a fence was required in the past will continue to be required, whatever the city's standards and and practices have been. So, if your practice happened into have fencing for residential projects, the intention is nothing changes.
Thank you, any other comments, questions, or input from the committee? Anyone? Okay. Well, I'm going to suggest seeing how the resolution and the other document are not attached to this, that we continue this to. Hey, what was it, the January meeting, Michael?
Yeah, so that was later on our. Later on our agenda from items from staff, we were considering canceling the meeting on the twenty first. You know, this would, this would be the only item if you, if if the commission did want to hold a meeting on the twenty first, but we were. Because it is so close to the holidays. We were, we were trying to reserve items, so we don't have any other items for that meeting, we do have. A house on Hazel Avenue, but that one will be heard in in January, so that was the only item we had pending for the twenty first, so. So, it's really up to the commission if you'd like to hold that meeting on the twenty first for this item, or it can wait till January, this is not a time sensitive. Item, so we would basically, you know, we can send it to the city council at any time after the planning commissions made their decision.
Okay, based on that, does anyone want to make a recommendation, or a motion?
I make a motion that we stay this until the January meeting.
Okay, we have a motion? Sorry?
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second, Michael, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Morgan?
Hi.
Commissioner Lefin?
Hi.
Commissioner Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner Dorazo?
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Hi.
And Chair Biassani?
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. All right, item five, planning commission elections. What we've typically done in the past is nominated the, gosh. The newest person on the commission who hasn't served on the chair. I believe that would be Commissioner Harmon would be next up in line. Is, I would like to nominate him unless someone else has another name they would like to. Throw out there? Anyone? Okay, in that case, I will, would like to nominate Commissioner Harmon. Or the chair for the planning commission for the next year.
I am happy to accept the nomination.
Thank you, Michael, would you help us with a roll call vote, please?
I'm sorry, we we do need a, we'll need a second on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kelly, thank you. Okay, we have a motion in a second, thank you, Michael.
Commissioner Morgan?
Hi.
Commissioner Madden?
Hi.
Commissioner Lefin?
Hi.
Commissioner Dorazo?
Hi.
Vice Chair Harmon?
Point of order is it bad form to vote on my own nomination, so I'll abstain.
You can't.
I I will abstain out of a sense that it's a conflict of interest.
I can do it all the time.
And Chair Biassani?
Hi.
Okay, great.
All right, so for vice chair, that would, using that same formula, Commissioner Madden, would you be interested? Interested in being vice chair?
Absolutely, as long as you promise to help me with all the motioning words and with order to go in, no problem.
Be happy.
I'll learn in that part after you.
Are you, are you making the nomination, so I'm second in, shall I make the nomination?
I was just asking, so if someone else would like to make the nomination, or nominate someone else?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Gerard Madden as my vice chair for January, I guess, either December or January, depending on whether we're having that December meeting.
I I second that.
Very good, so we have a motion in a second, Michael, once again, would you be so kind?
Commissioner Morgan?
Hi.
Mr. Madden can abstain if.
Hi.
You say aye, we're ready, good. Commissioner Lefin?
Hi.
Commissioner Dorazo?
Hi.
And Commissioner Johnson has joined us?
Hi.
And Chair Biassani?
Hi.
Thank you.
I'm also an aye, although my name got missed there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yours.
All right.
But Assistant Commissioner Khan also says aye.
Thank you, all right, so we'll move on to item six, which is items from staff.
Okay. At the last meeting, Commissioner Madden had brought up just a question about the airport land use maps, so I'll do a quick. Screen share, and it just has to do, I think it's a good, a good reminder, and this is one of my favorite maps. Within San Mateo County, so I always love to share it, just because it's so colorful and interesting. So. So, this is the, so, so the question was raised regarding residential projects. In the city, and as you know, our. Transit corridor plan has a height limit of seven, five stories, seventy feet, however. With various density bonus. Application of density bonus. You know, some slight adjustments in height can be requested, so what this map shows, and. I'll I'll move my cursor around a little bit, but. You know, there's this, if you look at the. At the cross section up at the top right first. You can see that this, there's a measurement between the ground surface and then the. The aeronautical surface. That, you know, that they. FAA just typically does not want to see penetrated, and so when you apply that over. The varied topography we have here in San Mateo County, you get the map that's that you see before you, where. The beige colors. Mean that the, the, the delta between the ground level and the conical surface. Can be between thirty-five and sixty-five feet, which would automatically limit the height of buildings to within that range, depending on what the base ground elevation is. And then you have. The green, the green areas, which are sixty-five to a hundred feet. And then the the blue or purply areas, which are a hundred to a hundred fifty feet, and then the gray areas, which are a hundred and fifty or more feet between the ground surface. And the conical surface, so if you. Again, I apologize, this map's a little hard to read, but. You'll notice that the Tam Tam Fran shopping center area, just north of three eighty is the green, which would be sixty, between sixty-five and a hundred. But most of our DCP area, which is. South of the the three eighty sign that you see here, is outside of the immediate conical surface, so. The height limit is not. You know, the height limit for. Within this, the transit quarter plan, the seventy feet is not impacted by the height of the the conical surface, so. So, I hope I made some sense there. Are there any questions about that?
Michael, it's trick, actually, if you could send me that slide, I'd love to have that to take a look at.
Yeah, I this, I I would recommend, what I'll do is I'll send you a link to the document.
Okay.
The document has, you know. Several several maps that are worth looking at, and they're easier to look at within the plan itself. So, I'll send, I'll send that link, the other, the other map I wanted to show was just. A reminder of the noise contours, so. The. We're looking at the two magenta lines, so the, the outside magenta line is the seventy decibel. Line, and then the interior magenta line is a seventy-five decibel, so. The airport land use plan considers any resident, new residential land use between the seventy and seventy-five. Contour as an incompatible use. So. That, you know, that, again, there's, there's a good portion of the city of San Mateo, I'm sorry, San Bruno. That is affected by. You know, by this noise contour, however, a good portion of the. Transit corridor plan properties on San Bruno Avenue and El Camino Real. Are not, are not affected, they're outside of the seventy decibel, so there's less than seventy decibels.
Would you be able to go back to the previous map, I have a question on this map as well, but we'll do the other one first.
Yeah.
Are you able to zoom in at all into the kind of?
Sure.
San Bruno dot and.
Yeah. Can't bring it up. Let's see if I can. Get down a little more. Whoops, sorry.
That's okay.
It's. Yeah, it's. Let's see, where am I? Didn't like the adjustment. Quite that much, but.
Are you able to pan to the left a little?
Yeah, I'm working on it, it's, for some reason, I can't.
Okay, well, I I could maybe try and ask my question or make my point. It looks like the green areas and the blue areas and the gray, we can go higher in a lot of instances than our current height limits allow. I think you said we have a, our story limit is typically six in the city, is that, am I remembering right?
It's five, five stories, seventy feet, just for the TCP areas, there are other height limits that are. You know, much lower elsewhere.
Okay, so, for like, you know, we're seeing a lot of like hotels recently, and. You know, I know there's a big push for residential units and whatnot, and. You know, there there are some changes in the building code happening with respect to. Timber construction, where they're actually going to be allowing up to eighteen stories made out of wood in the new building codes. If they're designed properly, fire protection, and because of sustainability and the need for housing and whatnot, it's a really good option. And given the few lots that are available in the city right now, I think it would be worthwhile if if. Maybe some pencil sharpening could happen with respect to these areas where we could exceed that height limit. It may allow for projects to pencil out better financially if they're able to go upward. Rather than limiting themselves to a few stories, especially on multifamily projects, so it looks like. There's quite a bit of the city that could exceed that, that height limit. there's quite a bit of the city that could exceed that, that height limit that we typically have.
Right. And if you remember that, there is a voter initiative ordinance twelve eighty-four, which limits the height of, of, within the city to fifty, no more than fifty feet. So it would require a voter initiative to have anything taller.
So the seventy feet you mentioned before, that's only in the TDP?
That's correct.
Okay. And then that's, that's, this is a, a big hurdle to me on meeting the goals of the state laws if, if we're limited to fifty feet. That's, that's four stories.
Right.
Yep. Correct.
Through, through the Chair. Uh, this may be of interest to Councilmember Hamilton, if he's still with us as well as the staff, but I believe that SB ten did provide that. I forget the exact route, but there was an administrative procedure to make a finding that if an existing voter initiative of the type of ordinance twelve eighty-four did represent a challenge to compliance with state law, there was some sort of administrative procedure to essentially seek an exception for that housing element cycle. You'd have to look into the details. I'm not a lawyer, but, but my understanding was essentially that under SB ten, a voter ordinance cannot prevent you from complying with the law, that, that, that you have to come up with a, a valid housing element inventory regardless. And, you know, if, if the choice is either we can't do this in any reasonable way, or, you know, that, that then the, the voter ordinance has to fall.
Right. We, we are working on the housing inventory right now. We do believe we can meet the the three thousand one hundred sixty-five unit requirement for sites that were required to be shown, you know, without, without an adjustment to the height limit.
And then just going back to the second diagram you showed with the noise levels.
Okay, we can go back. Let's see.
So it looks like the, I know there's a proposed redevelopment of Tamforan with a lot of housing units spread. You know, this, that could be affected by this. It looks like, you know, three eighty SNEP area, maybe we're, we're just in the west of that, but looks like that's kind of in the border of where that may happen. And just, you know, when the developer is, you know, designing stuff, they, they need to pay attention to that airplane noise or jet blast stuff when they design those, those units if they're, you know, gonna be attractive for people to buy or rent, depending on what type of, if they're condos or apartments, but should just keep that in mind. That's all I've got.
I, I actually, if, if Commissioner Madden hadn't brought this up, I was going to. This is something I've discussed a few times before with members of the council and with staff. Uh, I believe actually that South San Francisco has recently done development that is under one of these noise contours. And I mean fundamentally, you know, I mean, the airport's concerned. They, they had to pay a bunch of money to retrofit the houses in my neighborhood on the east side to improve the, the noise insulation of the buildings here after they expanded operations from the airport. And, you know, they don't want to do that again. But at the same time, you know, like, well, we know the airport is there now, and it seems like, you know, you put a building there, like, we, we shouldn't say that you can't build residences here at all. We should say you have to take responsibility to, you know, to, to build it with appropriate noise insulation to begin with, and not come complaining to the airport that there are planes, that, you know, like, there's not really a problem with, with putting housing in here. We shouldn't be making it illegal. We should be making it, you know, you, 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 you can build it, but you have to take responsibility for where you're building. And I had wondered if staff has looked at the recent South San Francisco case, because my understanding is that that was something of an exception, that they negotiated special conditions for it. But it seems like this is an exception that should become the rule, that, that whatever established agreement there should just be the new agreement that everybody uses so that we don't have to come back and have a special negotiations about Tamforan next time, or, or if they redevelop the San Bruno Town Center that's just north of Tamforan, right? But we should just figure out what we want to do with this and do it for everything.
Yeah, so that, yes, we did look at the, there's, it's a project on NOR, just north of the mall that, that was approximately three hundred units that the the City of San Francisco went through an airport land use commission override process. So it was an approval by their city council to to basically override the recommendation. There was, you know, there were certain requirements, you know, essentially, you know, taking full responsibility for the, for the project and its location and, and also for the noise. You know, so essentially, you know, was all, was all part of the, the approval process. And the City of South San Francisco is also updating their general plan and some of their you know, some of the types of development they're looking at, including housing, also does fall within the noise contour. So they're, they're also be looking at, you know, a more global, they may be looking at a more global override with the ALUC. And so they're having those conversations with, with them right now.
Is that something that we're negotiating jointly? It seems like it would be efficient for everyone if we all are working from the same standard.
Not, not at this point. We do, we do have a meeting scheduled though with the airport planners in, in December. Start a conversation.
Yeah, I think if, if everybody from the affected cities, which I think is South San Francisco, San Bruno, Millbrae, and just like a tiny, tiny little corner of Burlingame, I don't know whether there's any residential land in that. But it does seem like we should all be on the same page so that anybody that's doing development in the area knows the standards.
Yeah, there'll definitely be cost impacts to lazy windows, exterior facade, roofs on all these structures within those zones. And it's better for them to, you know, do that upfront rather than having massive turnover of rental units because someone can't stand the noise of planes landing. It should, it should get into some ordinance or, or some kind of development agreements for San Bruno. And if it means doing exactly what South City's doing, we should find out what they're doing, you know, incorporate it, in my opinion. But thank you for digging maps up. They're very helpful to read. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll send you a link to the plan. I think the whole plan is, is, you know, is, is interesting to look at and understand. And, and, and of course, the maps are, are, are nice too. So moving on to the next, the next staff item, we just had, I prepared the housing law summary sheet for you since we didn't, for the presentation we did last month. We didn't have any written information, and the commission wanted that information in writing so that they have a little cheat sheet. So I hope that's helpful for you. Also, so we discussed the meeting on the twelfth. So, yeah, if, if we, I don't think we need a motion on this, but I don't know if there is, if there's an agreement just to cancel that meeting.
Yeah, I, I would be okay with that. Any other commissioners have an objection?
All right, just through, through the Chair, I, I thought I just heard twelfth, and I think we mean twenty-first. Is that right?
Twel- twelve, twenty-one, yeah. It's, it's the, our meeting's on the twenty-first.
Yep.
Okay, seems to be agreement there. So we have, just as a reminder, though, we do have the December sixteenth ARC meeting, and we had asked for volunteers at the last meeting. We had Commissioners Johnson, Biassati, and Lethen, who indicated interest and the ability to participate on December sixteenth for the ARC meeting. We do have a couple items. So is that still okay with those folks? Okay, great. So then with that, I, we need volunteers for the January thirteenth ARC meeting, since we won't be able to ask for those in December.
I can do it.
Okay, Madden, Johnson, and one more, and Durazo. Thank you. Okay. And then we've attached the calendar for twenty twenty-two to the packet, and there's nothing unusual about it. There were no, there were no dates that, you know, were problematic with holidays or anything like that. So so pretty straightforward. The, you know, the December meeting does fall close to the holidays, but we can talk about that when we get there.
Can I ask a question? I, I have so many calendars on my Outlook. It's confusing, but do you guys send or is it possible to send email or Outlook invites for these meetings? And mainly the ARC meetings, because sometimes I forget if I've signed up or not. Is it, is it possible to do that with like?
Absolutely.
Reminder like four or five days prior to that meeting, so?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
And Michael, as long as you're talking about calendars in twenty twenty-two, I know some of us are coming up to the end of our terms in twenty twenty-two. Wouldn't you have a chance, could you get that information together for us so that we can either apply or what we need to do?
Abs- absolutely. Thanks, thanks for the reminder.
Thank you. I appreciate the effort. Was that all?
My, I think my term is coming up because I was kind of like a interim assignee or something. So I don't know if that affects the Vice Chair thing or not, but I, I don't know.
No. Yeah, I do have, we, we have quite a few. We have Chair Biassati is, Chair Biassati is twenty twenty-two. Vice Chair Harmon is twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Durazo is twenty twenty-two. Commissioner Lethen is twenty twenty-four. Mary Lou Johnson's twenty twenty-four. Gerard, Gerard, Gerard Madden is twenty twenty-two, and Val Morgan is twenty twenty-two as well. So, yeah, so we've got one, two, three, we've got four, four folks that, yeah, was, the term expires this year.
Do we know what month?
That's, that's a good question. I'm, I'll, I'll have to find out that.
Okay. Michael, did you have any more items from staff?
No.
All right, Michael. A reminder about the meeting on Thursday as well.
Yes, yes, we do have the, the special ARC meeting on Thursday. As well. Or, I mean, Harmon, Biassati, and Johnson, I believe. Yeah.
Got it. Okay, so we'll move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. This is a moment in time for folks at home if they'd like to address the commission for items that are not on menu, on the agenda. You either raise your hand or star nine on the phone, and we'll give you a moment or two to, to do that.
And it looks like we don't have any.
Very good. Thank you, Ers. Okay, so we'll move on to items from number eight, items from members and subcommittee reports. Anyone have anything? No? I would just like to say thank you for the privilege and the opportunity to be the Chair this last year. It's been an interesting year. I, I'm glad that we've all made it through this situation and gotten to where we're at. It's been a pleasure to work with each and every one of you. I look forward to doing our meetings again in person. I miss that a lot. Yeah, just thank you again, everyone. It's, it's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks for meeting, Rick. Great job.
No problem. Thank you. And with that, we are adjourned until January twelfth?
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth, thank you. We're adjourned until January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and all the rest of that to everyone. Happy Thanksgiving for those who I won't see until then.
Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you. I forgot.
Rick, I just want to say one, one small thing, aside from the fact that you've done a fabulous job, and to say thank you for that amazing journey that you always take us through, your solid, sound, and I always appreciate your leadership. And also I wanted just to comment because I came on late, quite late, and so I was stuck in traffic coming from Cameron Park, and I just wanted, I, I did send Rick a note, but it was way after the fact. And it was three hour drive, and I didn't anticipate that. So I, I just apologize for not getting on timely.
No problem. No problem at all. I'm glad you made it.
Yeah.
Great.
I, I, yeah, thank you.
All right. Unless anyone has anything else, we're done. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays. And I'll, I'll see you, if you on Thursday.